Let's get started, we've got a long evening otherwise. Say the pledge. Alright, well we got everybody here tonight, that's another rarity, two in a row, man. When was the last time we did that, about a year ago maybe? Anyway, alright, so we got a quorum, we're good. Um, regular agenda, you guys, Brent, there wasn't any changes that you were aware of on there? Yep? Let's see, you guys had a chance to look at it?
Make your motion.
Okay, John makes a motion.
Second.
Dave does a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Okay, consent agenda. With vendor invoices on there. Maybe a chance to look through that, any questions, concerns? Brent, you didn't, there was nothing that we needed to look at, since this got sent out?
Not off the top of my head, the one thing we are looking at is just presenting the information a little different in the future.
Yep.
I talked with Councilman Aaron Fennel on about that, but working out details on that, so you may see some tweaks to it in the future.
Okay.
Motion approved.
Okay, Brian has a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Chelsea does a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, consent agenda is approved. Alright, approval of the minutes from the November nineteenth meeting? Yeah, I'm gonna tell you that earlier when I pulled up an old one, you must have just over, must have got it up there and I saw it again and so.
I don't see the minutes in that.
Should be in there.
Yep, keep, just scroll down.
Keep scrolling, you're in the overall copy?
Yep.
So you have everything in there.
Well, that's the Tara Gardens one, so that's on the vendor invoices. So yep, and then the minute should be right there.
There you go.
You guys have any questions on the minutes?
Just a pointer of us, thank you for putting the numbers on everything.
Yep.
But notice that you gotta put zero and then for single digit ones, so that they're all in the same order.
Yep. It's a work in process.
Yep, I appreciate the work, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anybody got any questions or additions? Corrections? Those are gonna accept the motion to accept the minutes as they are?
Some more.
Okay, Dave, give me a second. John, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Alright, so we got a open period here for public comment, anybody got anything that they wanna say? Russ, you were the first one to get your hand up, go.
Russ, you gotta go to the podium.
Yep.
I would like to request that the city council consider, uh, putting in place a process where for all special assessments, notice is mailed, uh, prior to the comment or comment period. The city lawyer said I should start with you guys, otherwise I'll do it by, I'll do it by petition and put it on, on the election.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you Russ. Okay. I can talk to you about that later too Russ, follow up with you on that, anybody else got anything else they wanna talk about?
Do you want me to give you the century co-provision that allows that, or?
Sure, being we're here.
So if you all wanna write it down, it's forty dash twenty-three dash ten, subsection three.
Okay.
Forty, twenty-three, ten, subsection three.
Alright, thank you Lucas.
Yep.
Okay, anybody got anything else they wanna? Okay, then we will move on to number seven here. Lindsay, that's, you're up. You've got all the good news, right?
Yeah.
Alright.
Well, calls were up a little bit this month, eight-four calls, five crashes, I believe that was up, pre- reckless driving, two juvenile complaints. The animal calls were back up at six. Three alcohol related, two were on the south side of town a little bit, and then the other one was just Horace Anderson.
Okay.
Quite a ways out of town. Five medical citations and warnings, it's clicker ticket right now, and they must have been in Horace. So thirty-two citations, seventy-one warnings. This number includes eleven calls related to traffic complaints as well as twelve calls for W's attempting warrants. There was a media release of the high-risk sex offender moving to Horace. He has already moved out of town.
Yep.
Moved out on Friday. Other than that, no one's parking on city streets at night. For quite a while, so.
No, I got a phone call that afternoon that that was going on, and then she also said that they were, he was gonna be gone on Friday, so I mean it's pretty much.
Tell me your number though.
Yep.
Let us know.
She let me know, and it's like, okay, so.
He was a question and answer, so.
Yep, well I'm glad she got ahold of me and let us know.
Yeah, I let the city know and all that.
Question, question on the crashes, were there any injuries, were they, they were just fender benders kinda thing?
Property, yeah.
Is it because of icy roads, some of that?
That's what I was wondering, was it, was it due to road conditions, or?
I didn't take any ground, so.
I was just wondering, cause I know we had a couple times here where the streets and the roads were pretty icy, and that's why I just wanted.
I'm sure no injuries.
Okay. Okay.
More than likely fender benders.
Right, but that's what I was wondering, if that was when some of that took place, because I know the roads are really slippery.
Go back and look at that.
You said there was an increase, I'm just trying to see if it was just an anomaly because of weather-related things, or if we just have crazy drivers coming around here in November. So, okay. Anybody got anything else, okay, thank you.
I have a comment, I guess not for the chairs, but for our city mayor, I would suggest since Valley News Live did communicate the sex offender in our city, that we send something out via our website or something like that, just to say that they moved out. Cause I don't think they'd ever send that anywhere. Cause I saw lots of people in our area sharing on Facebook, just stating that sex offenders are out, and I read the, I read your email to a lot of people.
One, one thing I do wanna add, and I was talking with the mayor a little bit about this, is that we are working up, working on a policy to bring forth to council of notification-wise, so these would be the notification channels, so we follow through with what the county is doing, but then also what are the city channels that we go through, so like website, Facebook, things like that.
Sure.
Identifying that, identifying when we do that, and then if there was a retraction or anything like that, what would we do? So, I put a request into the county for their copy, for their policy, so we can see that as a starting place.
Right. Yep, that's, we talked about that pretty much right after we got that call, just so we could start putting together a policy, because right now we really don't do this, so.
And she kinda got that, she had sent that out, and she sent an email out to us that she was sending that out, and then it was like, you know, maybe two hours later after she sent it out, that she sent it out, and I was like, maybe it moved out, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Now that he has moved, I think it was just, yeah, it was very short-lived, but just in our own, for us, we could.
Yeah, it was two days.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause he was gone on Friday.
So, does, something like that, does it create more confusion than, I mean, is there a minimum time when?
There was about a two-hour window there where, she had known that the, that the, I don't know, the probation officer, her, went out there to check on the place, if that had just synced up a little bit, then this would have been kinda cured itself, but there was that two hours.
I mean, it seemed to create more confusion than anything else, right?
Yeah, cause it was just bang.
Because such a short period of time, and I mean, does it even, a situation like this, does it even warrant that kinda communication?
Well, that's what we wondered too, that, if, being it's gonna be a self-correcting issue, you still want people to know that if they did hear about it, that it has corrected itself, and will be very shortly.
And I think, cause I don't know that, you know, I don't know if they're gonna send out another press thing saying, I think he moved out.
I haven't seen it, but I'm not combing the paper either, so.
They might say that again, because we, we still get, you know, questions about sex offenders that have moved in two years ago.
Right.
Might not be that idea, maybe it's.
Cause there again, they get the notice, or they saw the notice that they moved in, but they never got it, but they moved out.
Yep. We'll, we'll get something clear.
Yeah.
Just, just announcing that, and then like I said, we're working on the policy to bring forward, once we get that from the county, then we'll start drafting something.
Just so everybody's clear, he is no longer in the Horace metro area, so, okay. Alright, thank you Lindsay, alright Brent, you've got the next one up here.
Uh, next item is talking about legislative priorities, as everybody knows, probably in, uh, January, North Dakota legislators will be convening for the biennium, to talk about different proposed bills, funding, the works. We do not have anything officially from the city saying these are our priorities, so we're looking for your thoughts, what are the city councils or cities' priorities to be brought forth or considered in this legislative session? I know a big one is the potential Prairie Dog bill, which would be funding for a different structure. That is a very important one, we all know that special assessments are gonna be a topic of discussion, so, do you have any opinions on that, or just concerned of, you know, how it might pan out? Those are things that we need to keep in mind, and also if we're, if any council members, myself, if we're having discussions with local legislators, we're able to pass those priorities on to them. We hope to in the future engage legislators more at state council meeting type format, or open forum, uh, one thing I will do is meet up with them, some council members, right, we may meet up with one here or there, uh, to pass on our concerns. I know Cory and I will be meeting, or attending, uh, the legislative workshop in Bismarck on Wednesday, so there may be opportunity also for us to pass on the council and cities' priorities for this legislative session also at that point. So we're looking to see where your priorities are, I know, talking with Councilman Horstman, he had quite a few ideas, I know Mayor, you had a few ideas too, so, looking for that list, so I can pass that list on to League of Cities, and they could pass that on to legislators too.
I think one of the things too, we haven't talked about this, but that got brought up at, I think it was when, can't remember his name right off, the guy from the League of Cities was here.
Blake.
Yeah, Blake.
Blake Proski.
Yep, the extraterritorial issue, that the state is thinking about eliminating that, the concept, or scaling it back substantially, and not letting cities just go do extraterritorial, so. We have to look into that a little bit more, I do not know where that went, um, it was a conversation that took place about six months ago, and I don't know if that ever blossomed into something more than just conversation, but there was talk about a bill being drafted and used in that, in that arena, but I still don't know what, if it went, how far it went, so, we'll see.
And I believe, one communication I got from League of Cities is they receive, uh, there'll be between six and eight hundred bills proposed, so there's gonna be all kinds of things, if you even heard any rumblings about, like the ET one, extraterritorial, uh, that's one you could bring up as a priority, saying where do you stand on it, so.
Just so we know what they're thinking.
Is the state gonna be doing anything with diversion, has that been falling into the state at all, in the topics or anything like that?
Oh, I suppose there'll be some financial, I would assume they're gonna have some more conversation financially about that, but I don't know. That's something, hopefully we'll hear something about that when we're out in Bismarck on Wednesday, but that'll be a conversation, we'll have to see where they're gonna go with that. You guys got anything off the top of your head right now, cause being, going out there on Wednesday, if you got something you want us to bring up, if you got, if we can get somebody's ear, just let me know.
Brent? I mentioned to Brent about labor, you know, NDSCS is talking about it, Academy, all the cities, or with all the work coming into town, do we have a workforce, well, we don't have a workforce, let's be realistic in this area.
Yep.
And I know our surrounding communities do a lot of work, the chamber does, we should get involved in that as well.
Okay.
I guess, piggybacking on that, does the state do economic development, or is it all really driven by the cities?
Very, a little bit. Uh, their main street program is probably their biggest economic development initiative, we've actually gotten that Partners in Marketing grant, uh, that was through the Department of Commerce, so that would be an economic development function from the state.
I think they're almost more like a clearinghouse, so help you with things.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know if they actually themselves, other than probably some international stuff, like egg trade and things like that, that they've done in the past, but I'm just not aware of any, you know, concerted effort, like, you know, of local economic development. Okay, well if you guys got something, just let us know, and we'll kind of bring that up.
What you have listed there is good stuff.
Yep. Okay, Brent, anything else?
Any action on the letter here, or just, you're, you're not, I mean, drafting a letter that we would send to our legislators, right?
If you could, if you, no, it's not a letter from legislators, if you're able to just articulate what your priorities are, uh, the mayor is in the capacity, and I, of being able to pass on council's concerns. If you wanna take a formal action, I mean, that does make it a little, little more teeth, that this is where your priorities are. What I have written down from what conversation has just occurred is Prairie Dog bill, uh, the funding for that, also elimination of, or scaling back of the ET, uh, diversion, just concerns of that, and then labor slash workforce. Special assessments. And then special assessments.
Yeah, it'd just get an idea of where the, where our legislators are sitting on these, is something, so we know. Okay, Brent, anything else on that, or they can move on? Okay, I'll go on to number nine, Lucas, you're gonna show us how this all works with specials.
Uh, gonna try, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Good evening, to the mayor and council, uh, so what we did is we just prepared a flow chart of the improvement district process, and then special assessments, cause it seems as though there's sometimes some confusion in the process.
Sometimes there's always confusion.
I don't wanna.
That's not on the chart.
Cause I, people read it, it's not all-inclusive, it's just a rough idea of here's kinda of.
So it's not a.
No, here's kinda the bigger items that, that take place, um, so it starts with improvement district, then it goes to the specials. So this is for your guides, when Jim and I are discussing this, you can follow along as to what we're doing in line of green.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you a question, why is there a concern of not providing this to, on our website, if something?
It's just because this isn't all-inclusive, it doesn't contain all of the steps, and I don't want misinformation based off of this flow chart.
Okay.
And, so it's, it's more or less when we're talking, cause like, tonight we have three improvement districts, and so it's, you can see on this flow chart, okay, where are we with this improvement district, and. For your reference, if you want, we can, put it on your website, it's totally up to you, um, it is now your document.
Well, I don't, I mean, I guess it's.
And that was discussed.
Minutes or notes that would go on the website from this meeting, so that was overdue.
But yeah, it's, it's just one of those things where if it is out there, we just have to keep in mind that it's not every process, it's not every step, it doesn't have any of the notice requirements, it doesn't have any of the, the engineering aspects of it, it's just here's, here are the steps.
We can put a disclaimer in front of it, just saying, this is an abbreviated process intended to highlight the main points in regards to considerations for the council.
Yes.
Something like that, I could work with Lucas to get a little disclaimer put in front of it, and then we could attach it on to.
And so I'd like to give this to the Park District as well, because it applies to them, um, and since you go, they can basically wear your hat as a governing body of the Park District, and then go through the exact same steps that you do to create an improvement district, go through that, and then do the specials for that improvement district.
No, that'd be good.
Yeah, and that's, that's where this started.
Okay.
So, that's for you, I don't plan on walking through it step by step, but.
That was a good reference.
Okay, anything else on that Lucas, or you wanna just?
Unless you wanna go into it, I don't think we need to.
You guys got any, unless you guys got some questions on, or something else kinda, that gives us an idea of what.
Good reference point for all.
Absolutely.
Pachichis for us to have. Okay, so next one up here, Lucas, we got the sanitary storm sewer and street deal.
Yeah, so what's going on with this one is, uh, the city council at its previous meeting approved the engineering report, uh, the school subsequently added a street, and so what we wanna do is just get that in the engineer's report, and have you approve the amended engineer's report.
We got some pretty maps that we can look at, reference. So this is just a description of the project itself?
And, uh, so the, the addition of Seventy-Ninth Avenue was added into the project, um, right now, the school has provided us with the, uh, traffic study for the area, and that typical section would vary, uh, because of there, no need for the center common turn lane. Originally, there was proposed to be a center turn lane, is similar to Lakeview Drive, uh, the, the traffic site at the school, and commission, said that they, two twelve foot lanes, or two lanes on each direction, with turn lanes at the intersections would be sufficient, so that's what is listed there in that proposal Seventy-Ninth Avenue, so, curb and gutter. Costs are very high, I, these are, both these are concrete, I mean, I shouldn't say that, so Lakeview Drive is a concrete street with a one-through lane each way and a center turn lane, curb and gutter, and Seventy-Ninth is a concrete street to the first intersection, when you keep going down to the map, we'll show you, and then from there, we, I switched it over to asphalt, to kind of, uh, to kind of keep the costs in check. So that's an overall of the entire school site, if you zoom out just a hair, Brian, we can see it all on one, uh, these are all proposed improvement districts, I shouldn't say improvement districts, you have proposed improvements, so you've got your Lakeview Drive on there, Seventy-Ninth Avenue, and then there on the far east side there is Sixty-third Street, and on the far south side is a proposed eighty-first Avenue, so. Just wanted to give you guys an idea of what the whole network would look like around that campus, uh, there's a lot going on with it, and there's a lot of requests being made by the school for street improvements. Uh, scroll down just a little bit more, Brian, a little bit more. I think you might have to get through all of the cost stuff, I think it's on the last bit. Okay, the district stayed the same, that was one reason why we were able to amend the, is the benefit for this is the school, the area, I've requested it, I have requested this improvement, the Seventy-Ninth Avenue was originally proposed to be constructed by the school as a private street, but in looking at it, it makes a lot of sense for it to be a right-of-way, as a utility corridor, you can take our sewer to the east, you can take the storm sewer to the east, it gives an out from, so you're not landlocked, or having to deal with easements, or other type of access issues getting through the school property, so, uh, go down a little more, there's a, there's a prettier map, that's just the zoomed in one.
So question, is the church basically in that improvement district?
The church is in the improvement district, they will, we preface with, just because you're in the district, you don't have to get assessed, but you can't add properties to the district, you can always not assess them.
Okay.
So, the church, whatever benefit is decided, we'll have the potential for another access coming off of Lakeview, and improvements to that parking lot can be done, that's actually for the district number, uh, two.
Relax.
So.
Russ, you have a question?
Is it, uh, is six, is the portion of Sixty-third going to come in with the school, is that gonna be under a different?
It is, it is proposed under a different project.
Okay.
A different improvement district. The reason that they are different districts is because Sixty-third Street has a benefit to the east lots, that aren't defined in the district boundary, so, that's why Sixty-third was not included in, in. The construction of them, the timing of them, could be very similar, but to keep it within the, well, number one timeframes and, and keep everything.
Right.
Separate, it's a separate district.
Yeah, that's, that's district, um.
Those are the next two.
That's district number three, you know.
If you go up, Brian.
Oh.
Next, next one, one more there. That's the next one we'll be talking about.
Oh.
There you go.
So, how far do you wanna go?
Oh, you're fine.
That's good, everything.
Go down.
All that's being added is that, that middle east-west road.
Yeah.
All your action is saying is approving amended engineer's report to include that east-west road.
Yep.
Cause for this one, you already approved all your resolutions, uh, so right now you're in that, uh, the resolution, and so see that protesting period.
That's a little bit addition.
Right. Right, right, yeah, east-wester. Now the district boundary stays the same.
Cause this was, cause this was already, the, the, the view drive was already in the district, this is just adding that, and because it was, like you said, it was intended to be with the school, where now it's gonna be a utility right-of-way.
Which simplifies utilities, that's the main intention of the city.
Well, the interesting part about this is that, because it runs directly through the entire school property, so they're essentially giving up that, that as a right-of-way.
I think they see that as benefit, because now you're separating both schools.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Hundred percent.
It's interesting, because then what that does is it, now that if this high school is here, it's gonna push more of that traffic to Lakeview this direction, than, you know, to County Seventeen, instead, I was thinking most of the traffic is gonna go north to Seventy-S sixth and over. So it's interesting that it's changed in that regard. Right? There's some. Cause they're, they're trying to figure out what to do with the railroad tracks, cause it's, you, you don't want this patrol as eighty-first Avenue going to nowhere.
Right.
We need some mechanism to be able to, to put that all the way through.
Probably, it might be up north even there, it's, it's.
They're still having conversations, they're having talks.
I'd only be giving this.
Well, right, cause, well, they're trying to figure out what to do, because they don't own this land, or, you know, railroads still own this, so, they're gonna decide, okay. I don't see a reason why we wouldn't, to modify this, so I would make a motion to approve.
Okay.
This modification to the preliminary engineering to include Seventy-Ninth Avenue.
Okay, Brian makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
John, give us a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Alright, motion carries.
Uh, and just so you're aware, uh, the protesting for that will be December seventeenth, at your next meeting.
Okay. Okay, sounds good, alright, Lucas, you got the next one here, number eleven.
Mr. Mayor, the next one is, like I said, there's, there's three improvement districts for this area, um, all basically a tick start from the school, uh, this next one is the intersection of Seventeen and then Seventy-S sixth, uh, improvements, so this will be, uh, Storm Sewer and Street Improvement District Twenty-Nineteen dash two, and we've nicknamed it Seventy-S sixth and Roundabout. We're gonna try to nickname these, so we can all keep them separate.
The numbers aren't gonna mean anything.
Yep, they're, they're all very similar, so the first one, we're gonna nickname Lakeview Drive, second one, we're gonna nickname Seventy-S sixth and Intersection, or, and Roundabout.
Okay.
Do you have that map that showed the assessment district?
Yep, go down one, Brian. Oh. Okay. I don't know where it's at. Oh, this is three. Yep.
Hey Brian, if, let me see here, I wanna find the.
Oh, is this?
You're in the combined one, it might be easier to navigate the individual files.
Well, I'm wondering if it's, oh.
Should be below that if it's, if it's a combined.
Yeah.
Keep going down.
If, if you go into individual folder, it'd be a lot easier, yeah, just do the individual one.
But I'm, I'm looking at that image, and it's just a single page.
This one here?
Yep. Or no, no.
Oh, that's, that's the location.
Yeah.
Location.
Maybe the very bottom one.
Unless it's on.
That's the right.
Yep, this one here.
So the area bounded in the blue is the proposed assessment district for these improvements, uh, typical assessment for arterial is halfway to the next arterial, so in this case, it's a mile away, halfway to Sixty-Fourth, halfway to Eighty-Eighth, and since the improvements are to the interchange, it was, the Mabel Grove and the area along there were added to the district, because they, that is the only way for them to come out, and to go through that, so. I know we've, we had some discussions internally about the district for this, uh, I can answer any questions you've got, or, but I sat down with the attorney and administrator, and this is kinda what we came up with, so.
The way it was explained to me, it really sets the tone for Wall Avenue and Sixty-Fourth Avenue in the future. Lays it out pretty equally.
And, and that's what we looked at. When you, if you scroll up, scroll, scroll up, Brian, just a little bit, you can see that, that dash line is the city limits of Horace. So for when Sixty-Fourth gets constructed, if it, when it does, it'll be about the same assessment on the south side. You're after the north side there, it's a kind of limited. But the thought was that the area north of the half mile or the mile line there wouldn't be included in the Sixty-Fourth. Don't get to make those decisions today, but it would only make sense that they, that they would be included in the next one to kind of balance that out. But, um, yeah, we did look at the Sixty-Fourth potential benefits, the Eighty-Eighth potential for a district. And, uh, this is what we had come up with.
So you're stating then when we come to Wall, that would be this whole area.
Yeah, you kind of. It could be depending on the scope of Wall Avenue and everything, but yes.
If we improve it all the way across.
Yeah, because we do know of Wall Avenue as another project location in the future that we're going to address. And at Sixty-Fourth, we know that eventually it's going to be addressed also.
That's going to be the hard one, Sixty-Fourth is pretty.
Jimmy, have any idea how many, hang on a second, how many acres are involved in this?
I, I didn't have a chance to recalculate it once we added that additional area on there.
Right, that's, so curious what we're dealing with there. Russ, you have a question, go ahead.
I just want to point out that no other street in town is going to be used by everybody in town like this one is. Uh, when you do Sixty-Fourth, it's not going to be used by everybody except those people living there. To do walls, it can be used by the people living at Wall. You do Seventy-S sixth, it's going to be used by, oh yeah, everybody going to the school.
No, that's a valid point. It's over nine hundred seventy-five acres. That's what I had the first time I did it.
One, one thing to keep in mind with the district boundaries is if the school takes on a larger portion, which our understanding is they would take on a larger share, so like a hundred fifty percent rate or something like that, over a hundred percent. Their portion hits a lot broader, it hits the entire school district. So it does hit even folks in West Fargo through the school district's boundaries, not just Horace's boundaries, so.
Right, the only thing we don't know about that, if the school agrees to go to that percentage.
They have agreed to go higher.
Yes, they, they.
They have agreed to go.
Because the improvement, I mean, let's face it, from there on, they're going to be the ones that's super benefit from that.
They, they recognize that they are the catalyst for this area. They're the ones that are pushing the improvements through here. So they have offered up a little more of a. On the other hand, we're getting a significant portion of this already paid by Cass County already. You're getting a million dollars. Reservoir. I mean, we're getting a million dollars to offset the cost, so. Yeah. I mean, it.
It's a portion, but.
All right, it's a portion, but on the half, you know, that is a good chunk of it.
For just.
And we're talking about just this, just the Seventy-S sixth Avenue improvements, right?
Just the round.
No, no, this includes the Roundabout.
This is the Roundabout and.
This project, it's the Roundabout, Seventy-S sixth. Yep. So the, the improvement district for essentially the, if we can expand the Roundabout beyond what the million dollars cost and then getting the rest of Seventy-S sixth. I mean, so to your point, Ross, it, it, there, a good portion of it is being shared with the.
A small portion is being shared.
The Roundabout portion is about one point eight million dollars. The county is covering a million dollars.
With the full bill out, it is not, you know, that, that's the full, we can scale back to something smaller than that if, if, if necessary.
It could be, but the direction from the council is to go with the one and a half Roundabout. So that one and a half Roundabout with the decade right turns, that would be at one point eight million dollars. And the county is contributing a million dollars towards Roundabout. If you go to the. Six, the street is what about four?
Go down. Uh, keep going to the, to the numbers. Oh, I tried to break this off, oh, you're, oh, sorry. Uh, this is. This is. So which, which document? I, it should be in the, the engineering report for Seventeen and Seventy-S sixth for two thousand nineteen two, fix it up that way. So what it comes down to is with the contribution of the county, it's a little over four point two five million. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's about total project costs, including the million dollars from the county is five point one. That would be on the city. That's for the Roundabout and Seventy-S sixth. That's an estimated cost, total project cost. So that's engineering and illegal all that.
That doesn't include the one million from the house.
Right, the million, so the total project cost is actually a million more than that. I just.
Six point one.
Yeah, yeah, so I, and I took off that million just to keep it for what a potential assessment cost would be, not because the city wouldn't assess for that, obviously.
While this is under construction, is this a bit of fire and trust in my house? Do we still have emergency services, those of us who live up there?
Been discussing with Jason, they said they're going to do something for us. I mean, that's.
Cass County, Cass County Highway Department is designing the Roundabout and Seventy-S sixth Avenue. They haven't got into those specific details of interim access, emergency access, detours. Hasn't got that far yet, so.
But he's aware of that.
He's, they're aware of it, they, they are definitely aware of it, it just.
Yes.
We aren't, they aren't that far along, I don't think, to start looking at, at that stuff, so.
So council, if you look at your, uh, new flow chart, we're in the red box stage. The first red box, which is to create this district, including the, the district boundaries, uh, the name, I think the, the best option for this one is just Storm Sewer and Street Improvement District Twenty-Nineteen dash two, because that's the, uh, makes the most sense, but. The boundaries were, we need some action from the council.
Could I make an alternative?
Go ahead, Russ.
Why don't you run about a hundred thousand dollars of sales tax against this infrastructure in your.
We're looking into that. Seriously, I mean, we got to come up with, the city's going to have to come up with something, we know that.
All, all that can be figured out later. We, we, we're not going to set that now because we may be able to do more. There's other avenues that we got that we can exhaust.
But that's, we're looking at that, we have to, we know that, it just, I don't know how much.
Understand, Russ, though, that sales tax is, we take in, if you set a hundred thousand dollars a year out of that, you're taking a major portion of it right now. That's not, that, yeah, we're pulling in maybe twenty fifty.
Yeah, we're pulling in twenty four thou.
And we can only do seventy-five percent of that if we can save the other twenty-five percent for other things, so. I don't disagree with you, I don't disagree with you that we should look at it.
The twenty-five percent could use another economic development, development guy, and you only get twenty-five percent of that.
Actually, none of our costs related to. Pay is in that, but they do some of this year pay for getting it up.
But yes, we, seventy-five percent. A million, seventy-five percent is available for infrastructure.
Yep, absolutely. And, and that's going to be the goal, try and minimize the amount of, you know, what we can't have to special assess out all these, all the different residents, right? Because.
You understand, I'm probably the biggest, uh, personal landlord on that street.
Yep.
With the most to win or lose by this.
But you also realize we can't commit seventy-five percent of that fund to this one project. Understand that, but yes.
We, we know, we recognize that we're going to try and commit as much as we can, but that's, that's part of our challenge, try and balance that. How, how much of that do we commit for some period of time to offset these costs?
It'd be a twenty-year lock.
Right.
Whatever we come up with, it'll be a twenty-year lock.
Right. So.
Twenty years, yeah, me too. Twenty-five.
Well, whatever we come up with, but I mean, a minimum.
It depends on what we decide to do for bonding. It could be a fifteen, it could, or ten, fifteen, twenty-five, twenty.
But I mean, usually it's a twenty-year bond is what we do.
Typically. Typically, we do twenty-year bonds.
We have to be cognizant of that, whatever we lock away, that's what we lock away for twenty years.
We, can we add to the assessment district later on?
No, that's why we need to figure this out now.
Tonight.
It's.
But realistically, it needs to be bigger than.
But, but here's, yeah, that's just it. Make it bigger than, than you think you need because you don't have to assess all the properties that are in that district. Some, that's always my, going to be my recommendation is go bigger.
If you're in doubt, you could go bigger. And then the special assessment committee may chug, bring it down, council may bring it down. That's at the discretion of both those groups. Um, or, well, especially the assessment committee recommend, right, you know, making a smaller area.
Right.
Uh, this was, you know, the attempt for the attorney, myself and the engineer to break it out based on following a similar logic that would be applied in the future. It does set precedents for how special assessments would be done in the future, to some degree. And this is also a method used by many other cities throughout the state.
And I'm a little sensitive to what Russ was saying too, because everybody in town pretty much is going to enjoy that road. At some point, some people go south once in a while, but let's get real, a lot of people go north. Okay, they're all going to partake in this road improvement. So is it proper for us to limit our region to what it's looking like right now, or should we expand that district?
One of these days, I'm going to get in real trouble for something I say.
What, you mean starting now or what?
So, so why, why not make it tonight? I feel I'm pretty lucky these days anyway, so.
Roll the dice.
Do you need to leave the room first?
You know, looking forward in our community, I think we've got a lot more opportunity for the city to financially pay for some of the major road construction on major roads. At this time, not so much, let's be realistic, folks.
We know that.
But if we make a larger assessment district for this one, in anticipation that we could probably fund a lot more of this later on, maybe that's the way to go. We can always pay down bonds. You know, so there is other avenues we could do. We can exhaust every resource, which I, I'm in very much favor of doing. So maybe we should expand this, this is the school area.
I know.
I mean, that's.
That's, I said, Russ makes a good point on that, and that's.
I, I like the idea of the way it was laid out, kind of tiered out straight across.
Yep.
But yet, I think later on, we could probably do a lot more financially on Sixty-Fourth and, and Eighty-Eighth. Uh, I think we're going to be in a lot better position. You take the sales tax, we're only going to go up in revenue. But I also don't have a crystal ball, and what other infrastructure needs are we going to have? We still have water, we still have a lot of maintenance, we have other things. I know we all hate the assessment, to everybody all the time.
We like it.
We, we, we don't like that, but, but it is a good mechanism, it's a tool that does work.
All the other elements that maybe get, you know, the Prairie Dog Fund, if that gets approved, that will help with a lot of this as well, so I, I.
But we may not see any of that.
This as well, because everyone in this city is going to benefit from this.
You also have to remember the Prairie Dog Fund is still an illusion.
Oh, absolutely. But there's.
It's, it's a lot of hype right now.
Momentum behind it because everyone benefits from it.
It, it could go away in two years.
Oh, absolutely.
Until Doug signs it, it's still a fairy tale.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
So I don't want to, I don't.
And we wouldn't see money until.
Well, at least a year.
Yeah, it's going to be at least two years away, but we just.
But yes, I, I know where you're coming from.
There's, there's many, like you said, the, the funding revenue sources are going to continue to increase. And as our infrastructure needs continue to rise, we need to look at other ways other than just special assessing everything. But because this does benefit everyone, I believe that it, it does make sense to expand this.
And not being able to down, or add to it later. I mean, if we can downsize it the other way, go big and make it smaller later if need be.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question of Lucas? So this, the area, which we know is Apple Orchard and that, if we were to expand this, do we get to assess those areas or not in the city?
No.
I don't think we do.
You can hold it over the property, and then once they're assessed, then you can assess it. But what I would propose is, is if you do want to expand it, I would, I would try to determine, is it Wall Avenue in North? Or is it Eighth Avenue in North as far as, at what point are people going north along Seventeen or going south along Seventeen? And that's kind of how you can, what I think you could do as far as expanding your improvement district or the district boundaries. Because like you're saying, people are going north on Seventeen. There's, there's no doubt. And it's, so what is the argument, at what point are people choosing to go south?
At least Eighty-Eighth, in my book.
I, I would.
I'd say at least that. But I don't know if you guys, I mean, again, the city partakes in going north, some go south, but almost everybody drives north.
Because what we're doing with that and just that statement is, you're saying that you are getting a benefit from this project because, guess what? You are going north to get to Fargo, to get to West Fargo, to get wherever you need to go. So you're receiving a benefit.
If you use that, you use that basis, you could almost go the whole city.
I know, I know, but that's, I'm saying that's, and I know that's what we had talked about at one time too. Everybody at some point is going to benefit from that, but where does that magical cutoff happen?
And that's where you get the fun decision.
Yeah. That's why I'm asking.
If you include the whole city in something like this, you know, it's kind of like a city, it's like the school bond tax. Everybody pays, doesn't matter who, who you are. And if we do get to the position, everybody can pay now, and then we can pay back everybody later on. Everybody's included on both ends of it, otherwise you break it off, doesn't it get a little diluted potentially?
The majority of this assessment is Lakeview, isn't it? I mean, the Roundabout is.
No, no. Seventy-six. None of us Lakeview. That's a separate district. This is Roundabout and Seventy-S sixth, that first half mile.
So the five million is the Roundabout and then, yeah.
Yep. Yep.
I don't know if you go all the way to the north, though. I think you use the north.
Yeah, I wouldn't do the whole city. I don't think you can do the whole city.
But I see, but I could see going south, not, I, I agree, I don't think we'd expand the boundaries north, but I believe south it could go.
Those people that live in Horace.
No, no, if you go, you're talking going this way, right?
And not that way?
Yeah.
Russ made the point, you would want this to almost match the school district boundaries. The school district boundaries are going to be fifty cent for this high school. They're all going to be coming down to that Roundabout to get to the school.
Why are we doing Seventy-S sixth? Just for the school?
Because you complain about your road being.
We'll think, we're going to ask. Two lane avenue, no turn lanes.
Yeah, if you look at it as like, all these people are going north, then everybody goes north up, you know, through Sixty-Fourth, and then, you know, and some people go south. So everybody in the town then is going to be assessed every time something north or south goes, but then people north or south won't. I mean, it just like doesn't really make a lot.
I think we have to go to the north quarter, I agree, because everyone, we're going to be bringing people south as well as sending people north from in-town going to the school, as well as people from the north coming south to the school and then going back.
It's a slippery slope.
Does that open us up to viability then for Sixty-Fourth and that potential archerial corridor and the Roundabout? If there's a future Roundabout there and vice versa for anything south? I think that.
Probably.
Probably.
Because people that live in the town go both ways. People that maybe live to the north don't go to Hundredth as much. So then are the people in the town getting assessed for everything north and south because they go both ways, I mean? I don't know.
Well, there's no good answers, we know that.
But this is for the school.
It is for the school. It is for the school. You know. I don't argue, though, everybody in the school district will have an improvement with this. You know, the whole point of this Roundabout and everything is to get some traffic flowing through the school and things like that. So I mean, this is an improvement.
If you were in doubt at all on where you'd want the district to be, my suggestion would be you do the entire city boundaries be, because of the logic, you could scale it down. You can have time to think about it more and the project could still move forward with the district boundaries and, or with the assessment district boundaries.
So can I do a?
If you were to look at it that way. Otherwise, you know, what you see in front of you, if you're wanting to do isolated based on where you live and proximity to the area, what you see proposed is that logic there. But you could always go down to this one, you could go back to this, you know, later on when it comes time to assessment districts. Council, you could, it's like the budget, you set your levy and then you work down from there. So if you set your, set your limit based on the city limit.
So if you set your, set your limit based on the city limits, then you could choke it down later on.
Can I just run a scenario of a different way to look, not at, look at this, but okay, five years down the road. We have a roundabout at sixty-fourth, we've done something with Wall, and now Cheyenne's at, or seventeen's at capacity. It's our main or tail of the road, right? We redo that road, the roundabout's already done, right? We're assessing everyone in the city for that main road as a whole, right?
If you've reached five thousand people, you'll get federal funds.
That's what I was gonna say, so we can get some federal.
Right, the potential, even though we get a bunch of funding, whatever's left, we're gonna have to quote. The whole city, right? Because they're all gonna get benefit from that four lane road and all this kinda stuff, so.
So what the city desperately needs right now would be that eighty percent. You'd have it then, you just don't have it now.
Right, right, understand.
I'd make a motion to change the assessment district to include the entire city.
Let's just hold up on that.
So while Lucas researches, while Lucas researches, we have a couple things that we can touch on on this. Um, I wanna clarify that seventy-six would be a four lane, two each way with a raised center median and turn lanes in that. Uh, it would be twenty-four, forty-eight. So that is, I wanted to clarify that. And then we met with a representative last week from the Adelman Edition, and they had some concerns as far as. Since they're being included in this district, could some more improvements be done to their area? Number one would be drainage. Seventy-six Avenue will have storm sewer in it, it'll be a curb and gutter section, so there will be drainage coming up. We're extending some pipes north to fill, to kind of enhance the, uh, or improve the way that those drainage swales work. With having a place, a low spot to get the water out of there. That's number one. Number two is street lighting. They're already in the district. They're, um, a dark neighborhood, and that was one thing that came up was that we wanted to include streetlights. And the third was, as everyone's probably aware, the, what is the quote, the, the sixty-sixth Avenue or sixty-sixth Street? Spur Road is gravel right now, so the Adelman subdivision is concrete. The proposed seventy-sixth Avenue is concrete. Does something get done with the Spur Road now as part of this project? So.
Even if it was just asphalt?
So that's what I was saying.
Um, it's, you know, the, the ordinance has stated as per curb and gutter section, you can get a, uh, variance against that. And the same with, uh, width. I don't know what the existing width is out there. I don't know if we could fit a twenty-four foot top, which is minimum. Legitimate through a clear or question?
Russ is looking at you.
You know, you can do that without going through planning and zoning. But if you have to, if you have to, and if your plan is only, we're done building streets without curb and gutter. You don't wanna build sixty-six without curb and gutter. You really, really don't.
Cause I don't know if it's even, was it wide enough? I don't have any idea what the width of that is.
We started discussing this late last week. It's just some stuff that came up and I. So would you make this a separate project that you're just doing it at the same time? We certainly could, yeah. And that's what I wanted to suggest to you too, is we can keep the seventy-sixth Avenue roundabout, keep the quantity separate. So we know what the costs are for that, and that can be spread out over a much larger area. The seventy-sixth one, we can go, we can have this in our back pocket that says, this is kinda where we feel the improvements for seventy-sixth lie. Maybe it's not quite as big as this one because of the takeout the roundabout, but has that. We can keep all, um, keep track of what's put into the. Uh, Spur Road, if it's so, so to speak, and then the lighting, if you wanna do such, and then, um, the drainage improvements too, so.
Can I, can I clarify quickly, Jim?
Sure.
There's some concern, because there's been previous discussion about the possibility of having to cut down seventy-sixth. And that's due to some unstable road face and whatnot. Um, sixty-sixth is at that height, and in some cases greater. And so that transition has become a concern. And so that's where the discussion came up.
Yeah.
With how do we equalize that without having to take a long jump at it? And so that's why the discussion of the possibility of, I don't think it matters if it's asphalt, concrete, whatever. Um, but just doing some sort of a transition onto that rolling and solid surface and that's most for, for future use of the road.
Yeah, that's what came up with it. So hypothetically, we lower it two feet. We lower the top of the road two feet. You just can't step up two feet. You've gotta transition up to that. So at that point, if you're already going two hundred feet, you go to the first, you go to the first road, and if you're already going the first one, you go to the second one. It, it's some of the stuff that had come up, and I, it was too late in the time to update the report, so it's not included in that, but it's definitely something that I can look at. And, and do it, as long as we create the district, we can keep, keep things moving.
Russ, you know, on sixty-six there, we'd only go so far at this point. Has there been any talk or conversation about bringing that road anywhere further north? I'm just thinking future of that road.
No, I, I know that Brent has talked about sixty-third going all the way north. At this point, the only, the only dream for a, a road going from seventy-six to sixty-fourth is. Is sixty-sixth Street. In fact, I have prevented driveways from coming out on that.
I know.
In order to make it a, uh, a, uh. Non-arterial. It, it collector road, which, which would give us, and I know it starts at an angle, but angles are fine. But that would give us.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm wondering, cuz just so I have an idea, or these guys have an idea of what we're dealing with here. We do this here, then we'll have to do it the rest of the way, which is fine. It's just, I don't know when that plan is, or when that possibly could come into play.
That only comes into play when somebody decides.
Yeah.
Who owns that land up there decides he wants to do stuff, because I already told them the last time we had a conversation. Plan on, uh, having a connector road, a collector road.
Okay.
Going all through your property.
So then they know that.
Okay, that's fine.
May I also, not to bully or listen, in our community discussion. Um, we talked about the possibility of future basis of sixty-third as an idea being extended. Um, some of the neighbors are very cognizant of that belt of trees and the associated wildlife that is in it. I realize there was also some discussion about the farm state, but I want there to be some attention placed on, um. The replacement of that road. I'm assuming there'll be some easements and obviously right-of-way and whatnot with that. The neighborhood would like to, if at all possible, put on the table that they would like to attempt to preserve. A portion of those trees, if it is a possibility.
Can I ask a question? How many, in this picture, it only shows like five or six of lots.
Yeah, you guys are still.
There, there are a lot more. Um, there are full, all booked one. We have more, a lot to my knowledge, um, has been purchased. It was purchased about a year and a half ago, but it has not yet been built on.
Yeah, we definitely have a map.
The gravins, um, are leaving.
Oh, okay.
Later, this winter, we, Jim and I met with, uh, a constable, of course, we met with a property owner there this morning. And he said that the gravins will be going down this winter. So you see a lot of sixty-six.
Lucas, you got anything for us yet?
The size and the form of a special assessment district is a matter to be decided entirely by the city council. After consultation with the city engineer.
I think we've done that part. Right, Jim? Or you're missing something here?
I gave you mine.
The city council should exercise judgment and discretion in determining the area of a proposed improvement district.
Alright.
So.
So, there's, there's all restrictions on us being able to.
And it says that the court will not change that or impede on that discretion.
Okay, so John made a. Re-enter my motion.
Go ahead.
Did we, uh, assess the entire city?
Okay.
Can you explain a little bit your reasoning behind that?
I don't think I need to.
Come on, John.
I, I, I think it's a, a way that we can always downsize it at a later date. We can see what funds we can put forth to this project. And, uh, it's not maybe setting precedence for later on, for a couple of.
We have time to refine this. I think, well, we do need to go here because we can't. I don't know how you can bring it in any further. Everybody's gonna partake in this, because this involves the school. And I'm not sure how you can, I mean, with the initial, like what you had there, I don't, that's, that doesn't include everybody who's gonna enjoy this improvement.
And if we make it larger, we can always make it a variable impact, right? So that, so maybe it's a ten or fifteen percent, you know, benefit where, you know, people in this area get a seventy-five percent, you know, something like that where. I know, the assessment district does, but if we leave.
Well, you have the final say, actually.
Then they're, by definition, they're gonna get zero. So thus, the reason why, as long as we include them now. We can think through that, let the assessment district make the determination of what is that true benefit and then make a determination. Because especially to your point, if there's businesses that are gonna be coming in, and that, or not necessarily businesses, I guess new developments that come along. They're gonna be new, you know, younger founders coming in, they're gonna be benefiting from that school, so.
Absolutely. Ultimately, if this school was not going here, this would not be happening right now.
We would be having this discussion.
We would not be happening. So when Dave made the comment, I think it was Dave mimicking the school district area. That kinda makes sense, you tie them both together, and, and that's the reasoning I would.
Blaming on me.
Yeah, I would think that's the best rationale for it right now at this time.
And not, not, I don't wanna, I was gonna argue, but, um. This, I don't think the school is a hundred percent of needing some sort of traffic direction at this location. I mean, even the growth in the town just till now, I mean, it is a dangerous intersection even without the school, like at this point.
Yeah, I thought I covered somebody this morning.
Yeah, and I think that does relate to the schemes.
I will.
With the owner of traffic, I mean, you know.
It was a couple of years ago, I looked out my office window, seen emergency vehicles going out, so a truck did hit a car on seventy-sixth. It's not, yeah.
We've, we've seen that.
We can kinda gauge the usage, so to speak, with traffic counts. I mean, I, we have access to that. And see what goes and say what goes north of seven, of, uh, eighty-eighth or Wall, what goes north of Wall, what goes south of Wall.
Jim, can you make a formal request to the county to get that?
I have it, I can get it.
I mean, cuz Jason's been promising that to us for about a year now.
I'll get it, yeah.
Yeah, do that, cuz I'm, I'd be curious to see the numbers too, especially over the last couple of years, cuz I know they've increased. What is the percentile? That's what we wanna see, is the trend lines.
Do you, Brian, do you have access on SharePoint to that North Dakota Streets thing? Cuz I put that together for a couple of that intersect, that intersection that we did.
Oh, the, the full electronic document?
Just the, uh, map that they asked at one time.
I never got that electronic from, the one you guys gave me last year?
The one that I sent you for, as part of the application for that, or as part of what information that they wanted? Okay, cuz I, I put some of those ADTs on there and stuff, so.
I know, we'll go, we'll go look for it. We'll go look for it.
Okay.
I guess the other, the other element of this is that one reason I would suggest that we make it larger to support John's assertion. Is that the, the comprehensive plan has yet to be done. If, if, if that comprehensive plan comes back and we change the land use map of this area. By restricting this, we may be restricting, you know, how that, how that special assessment or those funds would be applied. So, that's my.
Okay, Lucas here.
So just to confirm, the motion was to create storm sewer and street improvement district two thousand nineteen dash two. And include the city limits within the district boundary?
Yes. Well, that's the entire city, right?
Do we need to include in the title?
Legally is.
The other things.
Include what?
Well, I guess Adelman, Adelman's request. Well, they would be covered, actually.
In the district.
They'd be covered in the district.
They would, they're already in the district, yeah. It's just a matter of, do we, do we pursue any additional work on, on the Spur Road? Do we pursue the street lighting? And I think the drainage is kind of a no-brainer, cuz we've got the ability now to offer that.
Well, didn't we do a layout of the lights at one point?
Oh, yeah, we were one addition away.
I was gonna say, so that part, I mean, we've done a lot of the engineering.
Yes.
Been on, this is just.
They turned it down.
Yeah, I kind of.
But I'm just saying, we've done.
Not everybody.
But we've done our part on this. I mean, if we wanted to, we could move, if they wanted to do that, or we wanted to move forward with something, we have the, we're in a position to do that.
You'd still, if you wanna do it underneath this project, you'd, you'd still wanna have that included in the, as part of the scope of work or the proposed improvement.
Right, no, it's not.
And the reason that I would say it'd be a good idea to do it now is because you're already gonna be putting streetlights on seventy-sixth, you're already gonna put a streetlight. It's gonna be just an extension of that. I mean, you should be able to get a better price with, with the more of.
That's I need, especially when they're gonna be out there anyway, in that proximity.
Yeah, I'm assuming they'll learn the school too.
Okay.
So. I'll second that motion, let's keep going.
Alright, so John made it first, Dave made it second. Any other discussion, guys, I'll ask one last time. Okay, otherwise, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, so everybody was in on that, so what carries? Yep, well, we knew that was gonna take a little bit. So the next item here you've got is, uh, the resolution directing engineer to prepare the report, so that's just. Moving on with things, right?
Yep.
Anybody got any questions on that? I mean, this, this kinda went through this before.
I'm gonna reiterate, I just find it funny that we're asking him to prepare a report, and then two seconds later we ask that we approve it, so. Just kind of a funny situation, we tend to go through a lot.
We don't have to approve the report.
I mean, there's, I gotta do some stuff on it now, making the district. I mean, yeah, I've gotta do some things to make it more.
You won't be able to approve the report.
You guys can't do it.
Dave, we're just that efficient.
I know.
So you don't want us to go on to the next?
No, I would do the resolution directing engineer to prepare the report.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, John, Brian, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or show us a roll call this one?
If you want.
When end out.
Do it.
Okay, I'll roll call it. John?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Alright.
Okay, then you wanna, you wanna hold off on the other ones?
Okay. How about Dee, do you want us to go there, that one? Do you wanna wait with that as well?
Yeah, we need to wait for the engineer report to be done before that one can go.
So we'll move on to number twelve. Lucas, that's you again.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, this is the next one, uh, proposed storm sewer and street improvement district two thousand nineteen dash three. This, uh, will consist of eighty-first Avenue, the constructing of eighty-first Avenue and sixty-third, again, at the request of the school. Uh, to install this, this project. So, uh, the nickname for this one will just be eighty-first and sixty-third. So for this one, we only have two tonight, which is the resolution creating the district, and then the resolution directing the engineer to prepare an engineer's report.
Jim, when we're looking at this one, is this one gonna be the one, I mean, if we go through with all this, that road will probably be put together? When they do the high school? That kinda what?
Well, there's, could be done in two phases. So if you look at that road that we looked at earlier, seventy-ninth Avenue. The, the north portion of that might get constructed at, with the middle school construction, just to facilitate. In the northeast corner of that site is the drop-off for the middle school, and they do have the ability internally to come back around and come back out to seventy-sixth. It kinda depends on the geometry of seventy-sixth, if they're able to do that.
You're saying this right here?
Yes, yep. So, uh, there might be a portion of that. We need to look at it as a whole, though.
I know.
Do bits and pieces of it, that's kinda the problem.
Cuz I should remember the conversation with the school, we had talked about that there might be a piece of this, and then the other part gets done when they do the high school. So that's why I was just, what your thoughts, were still on that or what?
Yeah, and then the, yeah, that first part, I mean, like I said, we just can't do little bits and pieces of it, just doesn't make much sense.
We've gotta get this connected to seventy-sixth, it just doesn't show that right now.
It's, it's a preliminary, it's, yes, it would be all the way here. This is the district boundary. If you go back to the last one, it shows it connecting.
Russell, that's part of the project you said. Is it only gonna be four lane? Is the four lane not gonna extend to sixty-third?
The four, go, okay, can you go back to the map of the, here, I can just show.
Well, this map shows it, that it's four lane up to this little bit right here, and beyond that, it's.
Right, yes.
Down to two lane.
There's only thirty-three feet of right-of-way each side, each way of the center line at that, at that half-mile line. So in order to fit that through there, there would have to be some right-of-way acquired, and that.
Oh, but you go further this way.
Sighted not to bring, bring that four lane all the way down to sixty-third.
Agreed. Tearing it up. I know it's extra cost, and you're just debating a bunch of money.
So, you would have to start working on getting the easement right now, over in this chunk of land?
No, you're talking about, um.
This side, Jim?
No, he's right, you'd have to look at getting easement.
You have to get the easement here because this necking portion would have to.
It has to get back on, on the line at some point within that right-of-way.
You get the easement area right here.
Well, that's all right-of-way, that's all plotted right-of-way now.
Okay, so does that right-of-way extend over here?
No.
No, no, that's what we gotta do.
So that's where you'd have to go, yeah, is the right-of-way for this chunk of land, this, from this land.
Yep.
Is it anybody who wants to develop there?
As right now, there isn't much, there's, I mean, there's ideas floating around, but we can't say.
All I'm saying is, is we will regret very quickly not having extended that road down to the four lane. very quickly not having extended that road down to four lane to Sixty Third.
Jim, how hard is that gonna be to keep for timeframe?
Well, right away acquisition can go two ways, good or not. So, I mean, it's something that should be done sooner than later, if that's what you want. This, in all of our numbers, this transition piece was proposed to be asphalt, just knowing full well that it would be five years or so, it would be redone when the net need arises to take that road further east, but certainly can be done, it's just, what's that?
Did you make it an alternate?
Well, the problem is, we gotta get back on to an alignment, and in order to fit what the council would like in there with the two lanes each way in the median, we have to shift the road twelve feet south. And in order to do that, when you're gonna line up with something else, you gotta bring the road back up to catch into it. And in order to do that within the right away, I mean, it'll take probably, what do you think, what is that, four hundred, five hundred feet or better?
I was gonna say, cause it starts right about here.
It starts at that first entrance, and that was by design.
Right about here.
To get it back, to get it back into alignment.
It doesn't hurt to ask.
We're gonna find.
Rather than debate it for.
We're, we're gonna be making it, we're gonna find that's gonna be a traffic move as well.
Especially, you know, for activities and, you know, high school activity is gonna come, some of it's gonna go this way, but there's gonna be other activities gonna go this way.
Agreed.
Jim, let's, I think we should probably look into that though. Um, if that's something that's gonna just be an impediment for us for five years, we may also see if we can correct that now.
Well, it depends on if we can get this connected.
Okay, why don't we look into that, maybe you uh just keep, keep rent abreast here of what?
Yeah.
That's going now.
If something, if you can know before the next council meeting. Okay.
We'll talk with the county.
Yeah, just see what we need to do.
Um, I think you should direct us then to, to start looking at right away acquisition for Seventy Sixth, I think that would be the best thing to do.
Okay.
So we've got that, got that down.
Right now, there's no connection between.
So what proposal, I mean, how do you want us to word that, just?
Just not change the creation of the district, right?
No.
How about we do that after we handle the district? Cause it is a separate area.
It is, that's why.
It's going back to Seventy Sixth, so let's address the district and we will.
I would, I would create your district, uh, and then the boundary, are you okay with the proposed boundary? Councilman Schmidt? Will you please go to the proposed boundary, I think it's on page? That one?
Yes.
So yeah, let's, let's address that first, uh, if you guys are, if the.
I think that's pretty straightforward, cause that's who's gonna benefit from that Sixty Third.
I agree.
I mean, maybe unless you guys see something different, but I think that's,
Okay.
That's pretty much cut and dried, so.
So we need to approve the.
Creating of the district.
The district, so, so move.
Okay, Brian makes a motion to approve the district as it is, and get a second.
Second.
Okay, Chelsea does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
So Mr. Mayor, the next item would be to uh resolution directing the engineer to prepare the engineer's report.
I move that we um direct the engineer for the um engineering report to include reviewing the acquisition right away on Seventy Sixth all the way down to really the drain, right, where you would start.
I as well, yeah, it's actually only, I think.
And if it's one owner.
I think it's one parcel, to be honest.
Yeah, yeah.
Second.
To the drain.
John does a second. And I'll roll call this one, John?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, and it passes, so we'll move along here. Fireworks ordinance, Lucas, you better be careful here, playing with fireworks.
We love fireworks so much in this town that we're gonna let everybody have another day in the winter and another day in the summer.
Attaboy, now you're, now you're with me. That's why we brought it up the first time, what are you thinking I'm doing here?
So uh, this was quite extensive, I'm not sure.
Which one is this?
Fireworks ordinance.
Oh fireworks.
I said it to you last week.
Yes, you sent it to us last week.
So uh, pretty intense provisions. Changes uh five to six and generate first and then your second. Hard to see.
So this right here, this right here.
We're changing this five to a six and this one to two.
Very in-depth ordinance change.
It's just as thought, avoid confusion, so, okay. Wait a minute, quickly here, Brian made a motion, John does a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So this will be the first, you're gonna do the second, and then you're good to go.
Motion carries. I like those. Okay, on to the next one, Lucas.
So yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, the administrator received an email regarding enforcement of ordinances and, and mostly traffic violations in the city of Horace, and what the city wants to do without its uh municipal judge. Um, so at the request of the mayor, I contacted, or I reached out to Tristan Van De Streeck uh with Cass County, he's a, he's an attorney for Cass County. Um, and tried to work out, you know, what, what are the city's options here, is it, does the city have to get a municipal judge, or can the city work with the county and, and have the county do the enforcement of it? So after talking with him, he said, you know what, it's, your options are, try to find your judge, or contract with the district court and have them just handle municipal prosecutions uh for city ordinances and for traffic violations. But with that, if you choose that option, um you have to abolish your municipal court. So it's, it's something to think about, the North Dakota Century Code provides a section that says if you choose to contract with the county or the state, um you can do so, but in doing so, you abolish your municipal court system.
So let's say, so let's just say ten years down the road, we don't wanna play ball with them anymore, we wanna take it over.
We're stuck.
So, well, false, what I'm thinking is within ten years, you're gonna be over five thousand, and when you're over five thousand, you have to have
By default.
Municipal court, and so I think they'll force you to.
Well, goodie, something else to pay for.
Yeah, and, and that was my concern this whole time for the city was, if you continue to have a municipal judge and you start doing more and more municipal prosecutions, it's going to get very expensive for the city. So an option would be to contract, and I talked to him and he didn't think it would be any issue, you have to uh get it approved with the state court administrator, and then uh I think Judge Raisik is one, he referenced that would sign off on it.
But it's just a procedural thing, basically.
Well, in a contract, the city would contract them with.
Yeah, in a contract, but I mean.
Yeah.
To send our court deal, we'd have to just go paper trail.
Yeah, and so what I, what I told him is I would like to talk with you guys first and get, get more direction from the city council, I don't think this is anything that we have to rush into, because, but we haven't.
But we have some options now.
But yes, it's something to think about. And basically, what do you want me to do, cause I can work with him, he said, and he'll help, he'll do the county side of it, I can do the city side of it, and then we'll send it to the state for final approval, uh I talked to Sarah in our office, and she said Mapleton did it, they abolished their municipal court system. And so they contract with the district court.
So then, there's a cost to this, right, though, I mean, we're gonna get fee for this.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna cost us more than we're gonna.
Are we gonna keep the fines then, or do we have to use, I mean, we get the revenue.
It says that you work it out, and so I don't, I don't know, right now, I don't know what it is, it, the statute says that you work with the county to figure out your fees, your fines, all that.
I'd like us to do, I'd like to see us do a dual prompt, can we find, I know we haven't for a while tried to find somebody, a judge or whoever, can we open that back up again, but look at this as well, and we gotta, I can make a decision until I see both.
The city had candidates and, and one that was, wanted to do it, but then switched positions in a law firm, and then it just didn't work out, cause they got too busy with the new one, and so now it's.
Yeah, we, we had that, and then we had another, we had another issue where another candidate was, we came across some health issues, and so kinda been unfortunate on the situation for candidates, so we've put it on the back burner, but we do need to address it, we could look at the different options, see what it is. But we wanted to make sure that the council knew where this was at.
To at least have, have options with this one, and, and something to keep in mind too, uh Century Code, because you're under the population of five thousand, uh the municipal judge does not have to be an attorney, however, the city uh council can require that they are, and I believe that you have already recommended that you wanted uh an attorney, or someone licensed to practice law to be your municipal judge. And you can do that by resolution.
So just a question then, if we had an attorney out of your firm that was willing to do that, is that a?
Can happen, cause I would be the prosecutor.
Prosecutor.
It'd be nice, cause I'd probably win a lot, or I'd lose every time. It'd be either really good or really bad.
I'd just like to see you arguing itself.
Depending on who did it.
So you guys, if you wanna.
But and yeah, it's one of those things too.
No, it's just discussion.
It's just something to think about, and let's, let's move forward maybe.
I think it's just.
We'll, we'll look at both.
Is we making a priority to get somebody back, I mean, again, like you said, we had priorities elsewhere, let's, let's put the priority back on this, let's get somebody hired.
Well, and as I told the mayor before, every attorney in the state of North Dakota gets an email from the North Dakota Supreme Court every day uh with court cases that are going on and with uh job announcements, so I can reach out to the state too, and, and then that would be sent to every single attorney in the state of North Dakota if anyone's interested in the municipal judge position.
Throw wide net, see what happens.
But it's, I, I need direction from you, is that the option you want, or should we try this other option?
Well, I, I would want cost, I need to see both, I guess, so, we're just stating, and you think it's.
Let's look into it.
Yeah.
Both options.
I'll, I'll work with Lucas to work out the options.
Then we'll at least have an idea what we're looking at, cost wise, cause I know this is gonna come for free. We're gonna figure out what we're gonna do here, what would be our better option financially too. But we do need to get this done.
Right, no idea.
So, okay, thank you, Lucas. Who wants to take the next one, Brent, Jim?
Oh, yes.
I'll let Jim kick it off, he's gonna do majority talking.
To start off, um water's a hot topic in, in Horace, so uh this report has been prepared that analyzes the water quality in Horace, water, existing water treatment plant in Horace, uh the existing water storage in Horace, and the capacity that you have to provide water to your service area. Uh Horace, as you all know, is kind of a different animal being that you service water to a area close to the center of the city, when you get on the perimeter, it is rural water. So you have varying water qualities within your one city. So uh what this report did was it looked at all those things that I just talked about, and you know, with the water quality addresses uh treatment plant upgrades, uh something similar, a process similar to what the rural water uses, the same water. Uh the other thing is if we have a treatment plant along the same lines, uh you could probably you build your own plant or add on to the plant that you have right now. And water storage, if you build a new plant or you modify your plant, you're gonna have some, have to have somewhere to put the water that you're making, so that's where the storage comes into it, and then the capacity of it. So um what this study, kind of the Cliff Notes version of this is, decided that there were, were some costs associated with producing water, and those costs are identified in the report, I won't bore you with the details on that, you can look them up, but um as Horace continues to grow, the amount of water that you're allocated stays the same. So as you are producing more water for your users, as you bring more users online, the amount of water you can pull out of Aquifer stays the same. So that brings you to a crossroads of becoming a bulk user to rural water, becoming a bulk user to the city of Fargo, or trying to reach out and see about procuring some more water rights, more some more um allotment of that Aquifer. So uh we visited with Caspero water users, we visited with the city of Fargo, we ran numbers on water treatment plants, we ran numbers on combining with bulk in a rural. So uh the, in discussions with the city administrator and the mayor, um the recommendations that we have are number one would be to apply with the state water commission for additional water rights. Get enough water rights to allow you to continue growing to a certain level, knowing that at some point you're gonna have to supplement the system, you can blend the water, it'd be very similar to, to rural water, or, or Fargo for that matter. And uh the other, next step on that would be, start looking at the best place for water tower, somewhere to um store the water, cause you're gonna need it eventually. And you've got upgrades that are needed to the water tower right now. And then after that, be starting looking at, or negotiating with Caspero water users in the city for gonna secure additional water sources. The most economical out of this is to continue on with a plant of your own, continue on with a storage of your own, if you go Caspero or Fargo, the city has to provide the storage. So you're on, you're gonna have to provide a elevated storage tag any way you go. With, by procuring more water rights or trying to, it gets you some more time just to get your system going, handle your anticipated growth, and plan for the future, plan for ways to blend that in. Are you at the point where the costs are, Brian?
Um, you know, we're just done working down that direction, so, just looking at your demographic, so.
Yeah, so.
Treatment, what we have right now, so the current, we have two hundred and forty gallons per minute.
Is what your plant is capable of right now, yep.
Okay, so this is the last raw sample, it was April twenty seventeen, I thought we had one for twenty eighteen.
They typically do it every two years.
Oh, is it?
I believe so.
Alright. Where do you want me to move on to?
I'm getting there too. Lot of existing conditions in here, oh, I, I'm behind you, I guess.
So you're, you're making the assumption that in the next, essentially the next ten years that we're, we're gonna reach a five thousand, but there's, depending on what happens, that could accelerate, right? With development around the school and so forth, so.
Well, around the school, you won't be servicing that, that's outside of the service area.
That's outside.
So if you go, there is a map in here of the existing service area.
Yeah, I saw that.
You saw that, and then it talks about how much of it you've got left. And it'll depend on what you're gonna put in those spots, so some of that will come from your comp plan, or what's your future land use, what you want in there, if you want a large one.
This is the service area right now.
Yes, yep. And then, what you, what isn't shaded is what you can, you can provide, or what you are providing, I'm sorry.
So this, this is already under construction right here.
Yep.
So now it's a matter of, you know, development here.
Yep, and that's under.
Over here.
Yep.
Alright, so.
Either way, we need to expand our.
Well, and our storages.
Our storage.
Storage is a huge issue.
Yep.
Alright, so where do you want me to?
I'm just, I'm just looking. So can you just repeat that, you said our, our, your recommendations are for us to go get additional?
Do we first get additional?
Right, apply for, try, whatever, apply for.
Yep.
Second was, do something with our current facility, whether that be a, build a new one, treatment facility, build a new one, expand, update.
Adding, adding pressure fil, adding pressure filters and ion, ion type process, processing, yes.
Right, cause that's been a big, again, I'm on Caspero water side.
Basically water treatment.
Of our citizens, right, is the current water is dealing that back, right?
Terrible.
Okay.
Good, I just wanna hear that from you.
I could get you a cup of water if you.
Um, and then third is definitely storage, right?
Yes, yeah, in order to keep this moving forward, I would recommend that, number one, like you say, we apply for the water commission to get some additional water rights. Uh two, start planning for a tower, I mean, that can take a year or a year and a half before it's even done. It's a specialty kind of work, and everybody can see how quickly the one is going up in West Fargo, and we've done a couple smaller ones in uh, that are, would be more similar to this, and they do take, take time. So, um if you get in line for any type of funding through grants or whatever else, that can add some, some time to the project's duration too, so.
As a point of reference, today we have water rights of fifty-two million gallons per year, that's in our current water rights, and with the full build out with the projected population, uh we would need almost a hundred ninety-six million, so.
The last component that, you know, you were talking, apply for additional water rates, it's a long shot, but worth trying. Gain the treatment plant, building a tower, then last step was also, start talking to Fargo or Caspero to start negotiating a water supply, a contract with them, agreement. So that when that time does come, that we need to connect to them, we have our ducks in a row ready to go, we can connect to them uh within short time. So that would be the likely, or the scenarios, and Fargo was cheaper than Caspero uh by quite a bit, and they're working with uh West Fargo already for supplying them with the water.
In essence, we would get a similar agreement to what West Fargo has today.
Similar, yeah, and what we would, what you could use that for is if you have a treatment plant, you could supplement the water supply from the treatment plant, so you're just not as dependent on Fargo water.
Since West Fargo just did that, um, does anybody know, you know, if they went through all the avenues and then they decided to go with Fargo? if they went through all the avenues and then they decided to go with Fargo, you know, why or what happened?
Well, their.
On the cost and.
Their scenario was a lot different than ours because they had to run a pipe across the street. Where ours is, we'd have to run a pipe a couple of miles. Um, so that was a big factor in with their scenario. Plus they're looking at, they're, they are draining down aquifer and aquifer wasn't replenishing. So that was a problem for them. It wasn't long-term sustainable for them. So.
Question? Is all the Cheyenne River water rights spoken for that you know of?
When you start treating surface water like that, your plant costs go up significantly and the cost of operation, you almost have to add a dedicated person to operating and monitoring that. So we looked at that, but it was because of that, the economics of it, that it just didn't make much sense to keep pushing on, pushing on that. When there are other more economical o- options and avenues to go down.
And West Fargo looked at the tree, doing the surface water treatment. That was their avenue when they looked at, when you're comparing cost benefit of treating surface water, like what Jim was saying versus the aquifer water, it's very expensive. And that's what swayed them to go with Fargo water. Uh, we're not even looking at treat, doing the surface water because of the cost.
So I'm in that section five?
Section five.
Was that the valuation alternatives? Is that where you wanna look? Cause to do nothing, well, we can do nothing. Yep. And our water quality stays that it is. And but that doesn't solve the pressure in the city and as well as the storage.
Right.
Issue. So we, we recognize that as the city continues to grow, we're gonna be short on water and more houses we put on the network, the pressure will go down for the homes. And it's already an issue. So option two with the new water treatment plant, looks like that's five point four million. Of the new treatment plant and elevated storage is five point four million. Uh, which translates to about four dollars and sixty cents an increase per thousand gallons. So that's a pretty significant increase. Um, third option is the Caspero water hookup and elevated storage. Um, so the hookup and elevated storage is two point three million. So just about half, more than half of the cost. So it brings it down to about two dollars per thousand gallons. If we went with, and that's just buying water bulk from Caspero water. And adding to tower. One million gallon or five? Um, yeah, so that's new one million gallon.
One million gallon. Yep. And, and the one, the thought on that or the, the, uh, thing to note on rural water is you are positioning yourself for rate increases at their discretion. You aren't, you aren't gonna be the ones that decide that. They're gonna have that built in. So you lose a little bit of that operational control for your system. Is you're just.
For the rate, I mean.
Yes.
Because as trust, Caspero water rates go up, ours would go up as well.
Yep.
If, if we did our own treatment, we, you know, long-term, we could help control the costs a little bit, even if we went Fargo water. So.
So their rates do go up thirty cents to fifty percent, th- thirty to fifty cents.
Yeah, that is my question. You got today, what do you got five years from now, ten years from now?
Exactly.
That's the bigger thing.
And, and the other thing is eventually, just like Deer Creek, Caspero is buying water from Fargo and push, putting it through. So ultimately the water quality, you're, you're getting, adding another level in that distribution of it. So um, the last one here is the city of Fargo, hook up that, round that two point nine five, three million. Cost of water increased by two and a half dollars. Um, that's another one of those where you don't control the rate run. It's a, it's a lesser rate with the bulk on there. I mean, they've probably got their prescribed increases in there recently often, but.
But so the one question that I had, is there an opportunity to, um, get some state water commission funding?
Yes.
For this?
Yep. We applied for it last year to get on the list and we'll do the same. It was about this period last year of when they started soliciting projects for their intended use plan. So we'll continue that and we'll pursue it more if that is the direction that we want, the city wants to go. You know, if, once we find out that they are, will not, if they will allow those additional water rights and will not allow those additional water rights.
It, what, I mean, today it's lower rate to go with Caspero water, probably easier to connect to them because they've got a significant pipe close, just proximity, right? To, to how close we could tap into their water supply. So the question is with longer term, which has a better impact? Do we get better water quality if we buy from Fargo versus buying from Caspero water? Or is there a benefit from going one direction or the other?
Absolutely.
In one way, what do you mean?
Caspero water is incredibly hard.
Yep. So we, we, we get rid of some of the dissolved minerals, but it's, it's, it still has some. Still has. So people would still need softeners to reduce, reduce the, remove the minerals.
Fargo is just completing a many thousand, millions of dollar upgrade to their plant. And they're a lime softening plant. So if softer water is what you're.
So we would get soft water from Fargo.
Fargo's got, Fargo's.
So that would be a significant benefit if we're going that route is it, it's a bit more expensive to get connected, but you're doing soft water. The water, water quality is gonna be higher.
I was told by a local Horace resident that hard water makes better coffee. So I don't know. I don't know.
There is that.
I don't know if that's true or not. I don't even know. But I was told that.
Well, there's, there's truth to that.
Is there truth in that? I've heard you put an egg in some.
That's why you have to de-scale often in your coffee machine.
Ice balls, yeah.
Anyway, yes.
Fargo has a six million gallon storage tank in Deer Creek, you know, so it's.
Well, that's where it states the hookup would be.
Yeah.
Could be a long drive.
Yep. But, uh, we don't need an answer on this tonight. We just wanted to put this before you to keep things moving. I would recommend that we do reach out to the state water commission to inquire about those additional water rights. And honestly, I think we should start looking at, uh, where to put a plant, not a plant, I'm sorry, put a tower.
Right.
Look at the feasibility of the tower, start that process. So when that time comes to get it on the intended use plan, we should keep moving, moving with that.
That's the common denominator.
It is the common denominator.
We can almost split that out as a, we know we're gonna need this storage. It's just a matter of where are we gonna get our water from?
Yep. Yep.
That's kinda what's coming out.
If we hook up to the Deer Creek, what would be the timeframe of needing that storage versus another route? Does that change the timeframe on any of those options?
Can they get, so what you're saying is can they get us the pressure that we need?
Right.
They, well, there's two ways we could do that. There, there, we could have a transmission line, which is probably the way that it would have to be, being that we're crossing Caspero water users' terr- right territory. So we would just have a transmission line that comes into probably that tower to, to fill it. And then it would be distributed from there versus you wouldn't allow any taps on that line. Cause then you're starting to service those people and then you're stepping on, on Caspero's, on Caspero. So I would say that once you make that decision, you wanna do that and you start putting in that transmission line, you gotta have somewhere for that water. So it would be in that, pretty relatively quick. I would say you'd wanna do that. Um, it's gonna take a lot longer to build a tower than it is to put a pipe and, and install some pumps up at that ground, ground service.
Well, but we've also got the issue that as soon as we switch, all of a sudden all the sediment and debris.
There's a, there is a flushing process.
How are you gonna clean that up? Cause that's, that's, that's a different topic.
We'll talk about gate bell some other time.
Yeah. That's, that comes down to logistics. We'll get that. Yes, still have a, do you have a question?
Uh, a couple of comments. I recommend backup, we'll see to the new, if you get your water rates as soon as possible. Because water rates are never gonna get away from the issue. And second, having done more water tests from the Caspero water world. The water quality swings considerably from summer to winter, depending on where they're growing. And I've also found out that different areas of Caspero have different, different qualities of water.
I believe that.
Yeah, the different well locations.
Well, and what's been mixed. So I know that somebody who's dealing with that on a regular basis for personal issues, you still have to soften that stuff. And if you can, again, look at the cost benefit ratio, you can get soft water for the customers. It's gonna be a lot easier on their systems. But I do recommend you get the water right, take mass today to move forward.
Do I have two things? Is, we just start planning on storage?
The, the request for additional wire rights has already been made. We, cause that one is, you know, pretty simple. It's just a letter, a request, file a form to the state or water commission. As for if you wanna make some progress or steps forward for the water treatment or prepare ourselves. You could add, you know, we could look into the specing out the wire tower location for, things like that. If council would like us to do that, they could direct us to do that, direct engineer to do that part. And that would get the ball moving. That's the part that's gonna need to occur anyways with any scenario possible. So that would be the one, at a minimum, I would recommend if council wanted to take any action on it tonight. If you wanna sit and think about it, we'd come back at the next meeting or a future meeting, we could bring that up. But either actually, and we'd need.
We should be directing.
No, I would, I have a question. Who designed the current ones going up in West Fargo and all the ones that have gone up and more at Fargo recently?
Uh, probably more, I would assume. I, just assuming they're, they do most of the work in West Fargo.
I guess I would think, why don't we potentially put something like this out for a bid or something because it just specializes and we even have two cities that have just been putting up a couple of water towers.
Yeah.
Try and get a, a general.
Agreed.
Cost to get a, what it, what it would take for putting up a water tower and design.
Are we there yet, Jim, to be able to do that? Go out on a bid for something like that?
Not for the whole water tower. I'm talking for the design.
Bid for engineering services.
Okay.
Engineering services.
Is that your expertise?
Yeah.
Do you guys have that expertise?
Right now in Allen Dale. Yep. Allen Dale's a little smaller one. So yeah, we've done a bunch.
You gonna give us your best price?
We always do.
Kindred's getting in your one too. Hence probably.
Well, we said a million. That's what's going up in Fargo and West Fargo, right?
The one that, to give you a comparison, the one by Brooks Harbor that's being built right now, that's a million. So I could give you a size wise. And I think the one at Fortieth, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, do you recall?
I don't.
I've heard it's a million, but I don't know. It seems a little bigger, but they get a little deceiving sometimes. But I do know the Brooks Harbor one is a million. That one's in the process of being built. Okay, so. What do you guys wanna do?
If they have the capabilities, I didn't think, those guys have the capabilities that they've done for us.
I think we should probably direct them to, uh, continue on figuring out where, wanna put the water tower.
But we know we need that.
We know we need it. That's just now where we're gonna put it.
So we can move in that direction.
Yes. So what is the typical process then, Jim, for a water tower? Is it the design of the water tower? Is it getting the, uh, uh, state to approve us to put up a water tower first and then we design it?
We do it all, we do it, we, we, uh, well, you'll put in for, we'll put you in for state water commission money. We've already got a, an application in for the drinking water state revolving fund, which we've utilized before on projects in Horace. And, uh, so that money is there. We will get a feel for the, uh, state water commission, see if there's something that we can get out of that. And then we'll, we'll move forward accordingly with that. It's a, it's kind of a, like to do it concurrently, but there's gotta be a little delay there. So you're in case something falls apart, you're spending more, spending more than what you really need to. So, um, and honestly, the, the water tower, they don't change a whole lot. Once you, once you've got it pretty well designed, you can build it when you're, when you're money and funding and stuff.
So the question is, so in essence, we're, what we're voting on is to direct the engineers to start the preliminary engineering, right?
Yeah, we aren't doing design yet. We would just be doing the preliminary engineering report and finding out where to put it. Some more detailed costs of what it is and some, some other stuff along those lines. Yeah.
Looking at the, looking at the details here. And in reality, the lowest cost option from a utility rate perspective. I thought I saw here that with the three, it was actually Fargo water was the cheapest.
No, it was two fifty-three versus two oh one.
Caspero.
When do we need to have decisions to increase?
The overall cost.
It all depends on how you, how you wanna, if you wanna keep this moving forward, then the sooner the better. Um.
I think we, we need to make the decision and do the specs for the, um, water tower. But I, I think we should process the rest of this and table it till the next meeting.
Agreed.
I think we're, we're all seeing this and studying it more for the first time. And I think we need to evaluate it a little bit.
And, and we weren't pushing for a decision on anything of that. We just know the water tower is a.
Okay.
It's the common denominator.
Yeah, it needs to be done either scenario we do.
And I think we need a little bit more process, especially in the future. You know, I've always been told if you can import your water and export your crap, you're, you're doing things the right way.
Only got the one side of this.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing wrong with that. So.
Okay. All right. Let's do that then. We'll bring. You do, I believe you have a motion on the water.
So make a motion to direct the city engineer to create a preliminary engineering report for water tower constructions. For one million gallon for the water tower. Heard recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Brian made a motion. Dave did a second. I'll roll call this, being spending money. John?
Yes, Steve.
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yeah.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passed. Let's go on to the next one here. Jim?
All right. Seventeen pedestrian crossing. We lead off with a change order. We have change order number two. Which decreases the contract amount by twelve hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-five cents for work performed by earthwork services. So this is a balancing change order. This constr- this, uh, balances the ads constructed quantities with the contract quantities. So everything is at a hundred percent. So, um, just need to approve that.
Even with the change from the county?
Well, no, we actually ended up, our total cost was our total.
So, so we increased it, but we're decreasing it.
Yeah, it's a balancing to bring, you've increased it once for the additional work and then we brought it back down.
Cause we didn't actually spend everything that we thought we were gonna have.
Right. Yep. So.
You know, with the decrease of number two, that really puts a warm, fuzzy feeling on me. I'd like to approve this. Of course, it'll, it'll be rare that I'll do this.
Yeah, I was gonna say, wow. Glad we got this recorded. All right. So John makes a motion to approve the change order number two. Get a second? Brian? All right. Home favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay, motion carries.
All right. The next thing that we have is the, uh, final pay request. And the final pay request is for the amount of two thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty, eighty cents. This is the retainage that we withheld off of the, off of the project until it was complete. Uh, if you flip through there, we do have a final review and acceptance. We, Brent and I looked at it on the twenty-sixth of November. And we have contractor approved that. And then I have the affidavit contractor saying that he paid all of his subcontractors. So, um, I just need to approve the finalizing. This, that's the change order. And then go up one sheet, Brian, if you can, or, um.
Go far, further out.
Okay, there's that one. That's the last thing I just told you. That's the affidavit contractor that certifies that he paid his subs. That's our final.
This is a pedestrian crossing.
Yeah, go up. Up.
Keep going. That's still.
This is all pedestrian cussing up here.
That's where we need to be.
That's where we're at.
Oh.
Yep, we're on that. Keep going up to another one.
There you go.
Keep going up. And up one more. Bingo. Right there. So like I said, that twenty-five eighty-eight eighty is the, uh, retainage that we had withheld over the project. Five percent of the project cost until it was complete. So, uh, we need to approve that change order. And that's the final change order for that project or final estimate for that project.
Final payment, right?
Final payment. Yep.
There we go.
So mo- motion to approve the final payment.
Okay. Brian does a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Dave? All right, we'll roll call it. John?
Yeah.
Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yeah.
Brian?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Uh, the final review and acceptance was just that form that I showed you up there. Uh, it states when the contract, when it was accepted and then the year warranty period is defined in that. So just for your record.
So it's all these, all these pages ago.
Yep, all that. Yep. Right there. That's the final review and acceptance. Contractor certifies and then we go through there. So.
Okay, number seventeen is something we need to discuss again, huh?
So I, I prepared a lengthy memo on this change order, just to kinda outline what we had talked about since the last, uh, request was tabled on this. We, uh, city administrator and myself met with Jeff Woods of the contractor. We discussed them obviously not getting done in their time extension request. Um, I put on here the, the reasonings. And the one things, the, the things that he did state were the two thousand eighteen bid prices would be honored, no additional charge to the city. And we agreed upon a July first date. And if that date was not met, liquidated damage is a seven fifty a day would be assessed. And I put that, even though I put that on the change order, the liquidated damage will be assessed for that. And. And I put that, even though I put that on the change order, the liquidated damages will be assessed for that and Jeff had no problem signing that. Like I said, I, I think we recommend approval because it's not going to get done anytime before that, so. Um, this was the same contractor as the, on the other project that had already got the extension request, so they'll, I'm not going to say they're going to go at the same time because I'm just making a liar probably, but theory, they do involve.
Correct. That would be the best case scenario to get that done, so.
Uh, there is additional steel coat area that the city has requested and that where it would be honored at the eighteen prices and not nineteen. So you are getting a little bit of, of there, if the prices go, would go up in that nineteen season for that additional steel coat work, the city hired, did some, uh, additional patching and, and, uh, street work. Cheyenne and Park were two of those areas that they wanted to include in the, in the, uh, project, uh, that would be done at eighteen prices too, Jeff said, so. Anyways, with that, I would, we're seeing motions up or ask for motion or approve the change order.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, Dave, can I get a second?
A second.
Okay, Brian? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right.
With a big sigh.
Yeah, with a big sigh, I was waiting for that, I was waiting.
I'll make a note of the large sigh.
Drudgingly, yes, okay.
All right.
The minutes over, so I decided.
Moving along, yeah. Okay, on to eighteen, Brett, take it away, please.
Okay. Um, Brian, I just sent you a map, uh, I just got that from Jim here at the end of the day. Uh, what you see before you is a proposed policy for snow removal and ice control. Uh, this basically would give a policy, a guideline that council, the public would be able to see, that shows at certain conditions, this is when you could expect our public work screws out. It's a minimum threshold, so pretty standard, a lot of communities go, have their standard of two inches of, of snow accumulation on pavement. So it's something that actually puts it in writing saying this is what we would do. It's not saying that we wouldn't be out beforehand, but it gives you kind of a general idea. Also, if the conditions aren't safe for anybody, say we're in the middle of a blizzard, you're probably not going to see a whole lot for a plow is out right in the middle of a blizzard. Uh, so the conditions have to be at least safe enough so somebody with the plow can be able to drive through the road safely. Um, but it does give that minimum standard, tells you the different processes involved. For example, if, uh, let's say a mailbox got hit, it outlines protocol that would be used for replacement or assuring that residents can be able to get their mail still. Uh, so putting up a temporary box or setting them up with a P O box, depending on what, uh, conditions allow. Also would provide, um, guidance for if we have like a snow emergency, different methods of reaching out. Uh, when the mayor can declare an emergency or administrator working with each other. Uh, also outlining if something, say like a sprinkler head was hit. Well, that one, or damaged to property, you won't find out until after the snow has melted in the springtime. It puts a date saying, I believe it was May first, or a certain date saying that the property owner has to file a claim with the city by a certain time, otherwise it wouldn't be honored. So outlines a process, we ran across a few of those this year and just making sure that if you get somebody that comes and files a a complaint or saying we damaged your property and it's in August, it's a hard sell. But if they come to us right after the snow has melted or before the snow is even gone, then we're able to look into it a lot easier. So it gives us that process, also identifies a road network, now that map was not included into the draft policy that was on SharePoint there. I asked Brian to include it, but put it up on the video so you can see it. But it really just gets, so the main streets to where, um, you're not more than a couple blocks away from a main road. Anywhere in state limits that is going to be paved. All this is saying that we're going to hit those roads first, making sure they're safe. If we have a really bad snowstorm and then we're going to come back and get the rest of them. So you could dedicate your service to those main areas. Now, in reality, uh, how often would we go to just the snow routes? It would be really, it would have to be a pretty bad snowstorm. Most often, it's going to make sense, the staff would keep the blade down, salt, sand, pretty much as much as they can when they can. So it's just if we were ever in a situation where we have to kind of lock down on what we're addressing, they're going to address areas like that and also areas that are prone to drifting really bad, you know, getting in snowdrifts. Um, in the weird time, we do try to put windrows in where feasible, or fencing if, if that's the better fit. That's when we have some snow to actually work with to do that and some of the problem areas, I know like Maple Grove is a problem area up there for, and then Dreamfields, those two areas can get it sometimes pretty bad, so we may do other measures to help control the drifting, so.
So those aren't on, those aren't on the map right now?
But it would be, if, if drifting occurred, we would be paying attention to those drifting areas, so, yeah. And this could be tweaked, every year we'd come back and look at or based on feedback, it's a start. Uh, and then seeing how it applies.
I mean, for this section from right here, because this is township, we don't blade that at all.
We could put the blade down, however, we're not responsible for blading that one.
I'm just saying, from a snow, snow route perspective.
Yeah.
It would make sense for us to maintain this.
Yes. But a snow route perspective, we don't have the ownership of that road, so therefore, that's why it's not reflected.
But that's the problem is that they're not, the county or the township is not going to maintain this road to the same level of what we would, the same, the same rules that we're applying for a snow route.
Yeah.
Melsberg.
Yeah.
Which is, can we request?
We could do, well, we could do also agreements to where, like when I was down in Kansas, we had agreements with the county that said, county, you're responsible for this road even though it's in the state limits, because it makes more sense for you to take care of this one and we'll take care of these other roads. Uh, kind of always operated under the angle of, if you're going out there, get the blade down, when there's snow, it needs to be plowed. So that, that could be through arrangements with the county of just a separate agreement or the township, separate agreement.